So, um, thank you all so much for coming, um, again to our Mental Health Subcommittee Meeting of the City Council. I'm very excited to be here with everybody. And tonight, we do have some new faces in the room, so if you guys wouldn't mind, just, um, you know, say your name, who you, um, are here, if it's just you, a community member, that's great. Um, and I'll just go in order as the boxes are on my screen. Um, Teresa, go ahead.
Hi, hi, everyone. Teresa Glenn, I work at the Springfield Department of Health and Human Services.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being here. Alisa?
Hi, I'm Alisa Aimbinder, and I'm here on behalf of my colleague at the Public Health Institute of Western Mass, Tiffany Rufino, who usually comes to this, but unfortunately had a scheduling conflict, and I'm really glad to be here.
Thank you, thank you. Sarah?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sarah Kendall. I'm here representing Golden Year's Behavioral Health Group from Eastside Meadow. Very happy to be here.
Thank you. Ayana?
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Zeta. Thank you so much. Um, I am representing Representative Orlando Ramos's office, and he certainly supports the work that you're doing, Zeta, and certainly glad to be here.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Hi, everybody. Tim Allen, City Councilor, representing Ward Seven. I've made about half these meetings. I'm interested in the topic. Can't always come, but I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Adelis?
Adelis Pabosa, a community member.
Thank you. Ms. Della Blake?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Della Blake. I am currently the Director for the Black Addiction Counseling Education Program, but I am also here on behalf of our 501(c)(3) of Black Behavioral Health Network, and we are looking, hopefully, in the near future to have a recovery home for reentry and transitional populations in our community. So, I'm looking to support culturally-specific support services, as well as the Black Addiction Counseling Education Program is a workforce development, looking to certify and license more people of color in the field of certification and licensure for substance use disorder. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Valenti?
Hi, everyone. Valenti Tullik, uh, representing the Academic Leadership Association. We're a school-based mentoring and leadership program that also provides consulting. Um, you know, it's our mission to empower youth to make positive changes within themselves and their communities through advocacy and mentoring. So, I'm happy to be here. Um, thank you, everyone who's on this meeting for all you do in the community. Um, thanks for having me.
Thank you. And Sally? Uh, are you muted? Oh, no. You're not muted. We can't hear you. Technology.
Hi, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm having connectivity issues tonight, so I dialed it on my cell phone and then was able to get the video up and going. My name is Sally English, and I'm here representing Viability, a nonprofit organization based out of Springfield. Um, and I actually work with a couple of programs in the Springfield area. Uh, one is Lighthouse Clubhouse, which is a psychosocial rehabilitation center for adults with mental illness on State Street. Um, and the other is a new opportunity in Massachusetts called the Moms, uh, Western Mass Moms Partnership Program, uh, which provides stress management courses for parenting people who identify as female or non-binary and have issues related to stress, depression, and anxiety.
Awesome.
And I'm excited to be here. I'm sorry?
I said, uh, thank you for being here, Sally, and I think that we're going to be working with you on a program out here in Indian Orchard, which is exciting.
Oh, excellent.
Um, okay. So, are you, are you 588-2020?
Yes, correct.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you. Nicole, you want to just introduce yourself and? Who you are? I know Nicole's a community member, among other things. I think she froze. Oh, there you go. I can see you now. You want to introduce yourself, Nicole?
Oh, sorry. I didn't hear you. Um, I'm Nicole. I'm a parent in the community. I also do work in the community as a family partner, um, but my role here is as a parent.
Thank you so much. And, uh, Christine, Tatro? Just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Christine Tatro. I'm a special education attorney with a particular interest in youth and child mental health.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So, thank you all for doing that. I know we have some new faces, so I wanted to just let everyone know who everyone else is. So, um, there's just two agenda items today and, um, something that I, we didn't talk about last time, um, at the last meeting, and it was the mental health checkups and how that, um, is going to be moving forward. We had the launch in July, and last month, in August, no, we had the launch in June, I believe it was. Yeah, June. Um, and then last month, we were supposed to have a mental health checkup day at all the agencies. So, I just wanted feedback on that, how you all felt, whoever was there at the mental health checkup launch, um, and then the, uh, the following up with the mental health checkup days, how, how that went. So, I just want to hear from everyone who was there, or who maybe has a question about it. Anybody?
Well, I'll jump in. Uh, Zeta, this is Ayana. Um, so the launch that happened at Court Square downtown Springfield, I believe, was phenomenal. There were so many different agencies that were represented. Um, everyone had their literature. You and, of course, others were talking about sort of the notion of what this is about and how folks could, you know, benefit from the checkup. I, as a community person, you know, and working for a state rep, decided to also get a checkup because I want to not only be a part of it, but also, um, be involved. And so, uh, when I got the mental health checkup, there were a series of questions that were asked of me and which were very, um, non-invasive, if you will. They were very pleasant. The person that, you know, uh, sent them to me was very, uh, kind. Um, and, um, after we finished, um, those questions, she says, "Well, it sounds like you're, you're on a positive track. You're happy. You're doing well," and, and that was wonderful. So, at that moment, that's how I was. And so, I was really appreciative of hearing that feedback, um, from her, and I was able to also learn that there were other services and things that even the constituents within my district could partake in. So, for me, it was a benefit because then I, now I can be more helpful and more useful for the constituents in my district, for the reps. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Any, anyone else? Any other input? Sarah, you were there that day, right?
It, it was a wonderful, wonderful event. I, I completely, um, second, you know, everything Ayana says. Um, it was also wonderful as a provider to, to meet with other providers and to talk about the, 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 the real barriers that we encountered with waitlists and such, and it was a really great, a really open sharing of information of, um, and, and since then, I've been able to make and keep connections with folks who are seeking services for, for maybe a child and they're, you know, they had very long waitlists. And, and so, it kind of quickly really started to, to feel like what, you know, we're so hopeful for always was starting to happen. Um, it, yeah, it was a wonderful, wonderful, um, event, and, um, and we've, you know, seen some, some things kind of come from that, which, which has just been great. Very excited to see how that can continue. Yeah.
Yes, excellent. Thank you so much. Um, anyone want to say anything about the subsequent, uh, mental health checkup day that was supposed to happen? What's the date? I want to say it was July 15th, the third Wednesday of the month. We decided that every third Wednesday is going to be mental health checkup days at the agencies. How was that for people? Or did it happen? No. So, how do you guys think that we can, um, I guess, like you said, Sarah, right, uh, build on this? Because the whole purpose of this, originally, this mental health committee, of course, came from a crisis situation that wasn't very positive, the outcome. And what we want to do with the mental health checkups is to prevent a crisis, right? That's why, um, just like when you get a physical, you know, your doctor says, "Hey, your cholesterol's a little high. Maybe we need to start taking a look at it before you have a stroke," right? So, you know, doing the mental health checkups could maybe check in with someone, like Ayana had her mental health checkup. You know, like, I really love what you said, Ayana, but that day, I was okay, right? But on any given day, it could be different, you know? So, um, having the opportunity to do the mental health checkup and check in with people and say, "Hey, today, I'm not doing so well. Maybe I need this, or maybe I need that," before we get to a crisis situation where we have to go to the ER, or we have to call crisis services. Um, and how can we build on that to make sure that that continues to happen? Any ideas, any thoughts about that? I know that the Public Health Institute with, um, the Mental Health Youth Mental Coalition has been doing some work on that.
You know, if I can just jump in real quick, um, Zeta, if anyone else, I do apologize if I'm jumping the gun or, or.
No, go ahead.
But I just had a quick thought when you, when you were talking about that. I think, and I know this is part of the vision too, is that we're trying to break down the stereotypes, right? Or we're trying to break down the stigma to what and how we care for our mental health, right? And to speak to someone about how you're feeling, we've got to break that down. And so, I think what we talk about, how can we look at this differently in the community or citywide? So, I think folks like yourself, myself, that might be considered a community leader, does this checkup, right? That we say, if we're doing it, then, then the rest of the city, the rest of the community ought to do it too. Because we're no, we're not immune to anything else that folks are going through. So, I think if we all step up, you know, city officials, leaders, community advocates, you know, principals of schools, you know, everyone, you know, and, and, and maybe a, uh, a particular agency could have an ambassador for each of their agencies and say, "Okay, the principal from Brookings is going to be, you know, launching here, and she's going to do her checkup, or he's going to do her, his checkup," so that we can break down the stigma associated with mental health and, and trying to just have a conversation about how you're doing, and there's nothing wrong with that. So, I just want to suggest that as an opportunity to maybe relaunch at the different sites so that people will feel a bit more comfortable to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Adelis, you have a hand?
Yes, I, I have a question. Um, would, I, I just want to ask, um, was it that, um, everyone may have gotten busy and forgot that it was the third Wednesday? Because we know that everyone's busy, and, um, would, uh, email reminder that this coming Wednesday is our mental health, um, check-in, and you have committed to, you know, serving the community? I was just wondering of, that may have been, you know, contribute to, um, you know, the, the, the silence in the, in the room.
Yeah, yeah. Nicole?
Yeah, um, so I wanted to piggyback a little bit off of what Ayana was saying, and I like the idea, um, of like having different locations. And I say that because part of my work is, um, being a strong believer in meeting people where they're at instead of expecting them to meet me where I'm at. And so, I'm wondering if we need to get out in the community, and that's why the first one was so successful, and rather than the second one, because the second one, we were asking the people to come to us, to the agencies. Whereas that first one, we were out there in the community, putting ourselves out there with the people. And I feel like that first one was more successful. Like, we met people coming out of the courthouses that were asking questions, like, "Really? You have this service? Where can I send a family in a divorce?" and this and that. And, and I think it was being out there in, in the community with the people. So, I'm just liking what Ayana's saying with developing different locations and, and maybe pop-up sites or something, but really getting out to the people and, and lessening the expectation that they'll come to us right now.
Okay. Thank you so much, Nicole. Um, Christine?
Um, I would like to, um, uh, say, well, I'd like to agree with Adelis about, um, maybe sending a reminder on Monday or Tuesday of that week to the agencies that have agreed to do it. Um, you know, please remember to put your sign out, um, you know, put the word out on your website or whatever, however they're advertising it. Um, but I also think it would be helpful to have a reminder, uh, put out to the community, like to the news stations and stuff, you know, how they always do their little community. Um, you know, like, this is what's coming up. Have, have them mention it on Monday or Tuesday of that week. Uh, and have it, like, on the city website, um, you know, and, and things like that. Uh, and like the, I don't, the city, I don't know. I don't follow, but, um, you know, their social media, maybe that would be a good blast for, uh, social media a couple of days ahead of time, just to have it not only in the minds of the, uh, the, you know, a reminder for the people uh, who have offered to provide the service, but also to bring it back to the front of mind for people who might have an interest in having a mental health checkup.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. That, that's good. So, I heard two things. Um, so, one is that we have to go back out into the community, which I love to do, by the way. Um, and then the other one is to send out the reminders and to have the reminders. I'd really love, you know, Nicole got us onto, um, the Mass Appeal websites, I mean, uh, show. So, maybe that week, like Monday, uh, Chris, to Christine's point, on Monday, have the Mass Appeal, um, viewing say, "Hey, you know, Wednesday is mental health checkup day." Maybe we could do kind of like a, um, a hybrid, so to speak. So, if the agencies that are, are doing the mental health checkups could do the advertisement on their websites, you know, send out the reminders and everything, and then also have kind of like a pop-up thing. I don't know where we would do it. We have two weeks to plan it because the, uh, the next one is August. Let me look at my calendar real quick.
Like, 17?
Seventeenth. So, on, uh, 17th, we could potentially have another thing like we did at Court Square. That takes a lot of, um, planning and a lot of moving parts. And I know that the agencies, you know, um, it could be a strain for them to have two or three clinicians out with a table for that amount of time. Um, you know, so what are people's thoughts on that? Because I would love to be able to just go out every Wednesday, right, and do a mental health checkup. I'm putting the sign out in front of my, um, practice that we're having mental health checkups that day. But what other, um, maybe, what place, so Nicole, you said, you know, go pe, meet people where they're at. Where would we go to meet them? Um, and we have an iPhone that entered the room. I'm not sure who the iPhone is because I don't see a name.
It's me, Zeta, Cindy. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I, my apologies for not making the last event as well. As most of you know, I have a very, um, not regularly scheduled schedule. But I know with my other group, um, for caregivers, we go out to the different area, um, complexes. So, like, last week, they did a health fair at Cumberland over on the North End. Uh, we did one at the, I think it's Home City Housing or whoever owns the, the Y now, the Y, YMCA building. So, that works out really well because we're bringing it right to them. We did one on, uh, Wasson Avenue one time, down by Fallon Healthcare. And so, that might be a thought too, like going into the senior centers. Um, I know in Ludlow, they have, like, their Section 8 offices right there, just in their, um, housing unit, just like there is, uh, is it Avon Place? I think downtown next to the Y as well. You know, where we could use the community room or that area, and the residents were right there. They don't have to go anywhere.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. Uh, Della?
Oh, I'm thinking about barriers for certain communities and transportation being one of them. So, um, um, you know, there's the Sam Bolden Park. What does it take to set up tents and, and, uh, tables? And when Nicole talked about going to where people are, you know, how do we take advantage of the parks during the summertime, at least, when it's not 100 degrees? Um, just even to get people outside. And when you talk about mental health, getting people outside, getting them interacting with other people, are there any kind of activities that, um, we can recommend to people to encourage? You know, like, um, is there information on meditation? Is there information on, you know, the benefits of yoga? Is there somebody that can demonstrate yoga? Is there, is there, uh, you know, can we just not? I mean, not just not, but, um, maybe to have some activities along with the information that, you know, coincide or work together or, uh, you know what I mean? So, you have the pamphlets, you have the information, you have the agencies. So, what are the activities? Uh, and, and I think in particular, when we look at data, um, based on what, um, my 501(c)(3) will eventually get up and doing, how do we reach those communities that don't normally, um, um, engage in that self-care around their mental health issues for whatever reason? You know, culturally, um, what, what are the barriers that, um, some communities might have in terms of how they might reach out or relate to the agencies that are represented? And how diverse are they? To encourage, uh, those conversations? You know, the people from these clinics, are they diverse? Would they be reflective of community? And the diversity in the issue? Just, I don't want to talk too much, but that's what I was thinking.
No, thank you. No, that's very good, and that's very relevant. Um, Ayana and I actually did a community health and wellness fair, um, the 23rd of July, actually. And we had a yoga demonstration at our launch on, um, June, the 29th. We had a yoga person there. So, yeah, all of that is relevant, and it's absolutely necessary. Um, I see a subcommittee forming to, um, together the next, um, event. It sounds like we're going to have maybe on August 17th, um, maybe in September. But who would want to be part of that committee, um, this little committee to put that together? I know the last time we had a, a few of us were together on that, and we actually planned the, um, the July 29th one. So, are these hands going up? That's participation? That's, yes. Awesome. So, we got Cindy, Ayana, Teresa, Adelis. Hold on. Cindy, Nicole, Adelis, Ayana, Sarah, and Teresa, and of course, myself. So, Adelis, you got those names. Adelis is taking notes for us today. Thank you so much. Um, so that maybe what we could meet is, uh, we could probably meet via Zoom either maybe, I don't know, tomorrow or Monday to put some things together. If August is going to be too soon, we could probably, or certainly do it in, um, September. My vision was for us to have, uh, um, kind of like an outing, a, a celebration in October out on Court Square to just, you know, go through what, maybe what we went through again. Um, but we can talk about that in that, in that committee, um, to do that, okay? Um, Adelis, did you have a comment? You had your hand up before, um, I asked for participation.
Yeah. Wanted to follow up from, um, Dahlia, um, what she mentioned about self-care. I was also thinking of maybe doing some education. I, I agree with what she's saying, um, but also education about, like, holistic approaches. So, like, you know, body, um, body, mind, spirit, right? And also, um, healthy eating, right? It affects our mood, um, in our mental health, but also exercise, right? We know that exercise, um, promotes, you know, endorphins, which enhances our mood. And so, um, if we could look at the, you know, natural components of it also and provide education, or maybe like even an exercise small group, um, with ideas that don't require any equipment, um, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, that sounds great. That's perfect. So, we can certainly talk about that, um, at the little, the committee meeting that, um, that we're going to have. Perfect. All right. And now, I know it's 6:30, I think, almost. The, the second, I'm sorry, Teresa, do, do you have something?
I just wanted us to, um, also share that one of the things that seemed to come out of the, that mental health checkup was the, the collaboration and the, that providers could talk to each other and network. And I think that came up at the last meeting, how, um, important it would be to get, you know, have resources that are available to people who are engaged in therapy or, you know, trying to connect people to resources in the community and make it really easily available to them, but also just having a, the opportunity to network with each other seems very, very beneficial.
Definitely. And, and that's, brings me to my next point, right? My next agenda item, um, is who's missing, right? Um, to your point and to Sarah's point, the collaboration piece of it, I think that maybe at one, at some point in the near future, um, we can bring all the agencies together to talk to each other, to meet each other. I'd love to do it in person. Uh, you know, let's see where COVID goes, but, um, because that's very important. You know, all the agencies that I know, almost all of them have a waitlist, right? So, if there's one or two agencies that don't have a waitlist, I don't see why they can't get together and say, "Hey, look, can you help us out? Take 10 of 10, you know, 10 off our list to help us, you know, get, get, decrease the waitlist." So, that's something that we certainly want to look at, and I'm wondering if maybe in the committee meeting that we're going to have, um, to plan the event, we could plan something like that, um, if everybody's interested in that. So, definitely. Um, so who's missing? Who do you guys think is missing? I'm really glad that Ayana is here, um, representing, uh, the State Representative Orlando Ramos, who we desperately need at the table, um, and we needed all the other reps at the table, the state to be here. We need the federal government over here. But we'll get to them later. Teresa?
Sorry.
Teresa had her hand up. Then you, then you, Christine. Go ahead, Teresa.
Um, I, I wasn't sure if people knew about the Wildflower Alliance, the mental health. It's a program for, uh, kind of like a, it's not really a day program. It's just a drop-in center. But, um, the woman who's the director, there are, there are, uh, centers, and one in Springfield, one in Holyoke, um, others in Western Mass. And Sarah, um, David is the director of that, the executive director. But there's, there's actually for the Springfield office, there's a person who directs that office. That might be a great person to have. And there are lots of people that are consumers, you know, that are, they're, um, community members that come through and they do different programs, including have a, a small gym, you know? It's a gr, it's a really great program, and they attract a lot of young people, which is really awesome.
That's great. That's great. And, uh, Teresa, if you'd like to share, you know, their contact information, and of course, you can always personally invite them as well to come and, and, you know, join them. Thank you.
Will do.
Uh, Christine?
I think we should invite, uh, the school department. Not sure who is in charge of mental health and counseling, uh, services for the school, uh, for the city schools, but, um, I think that they need to be aware of what we're doing. Um, and be aware of the services that are available for students, uh, who have needs that arise because they can't counsel families if they don't know what's there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and I'm not sure if you guys saw the 87 emails that go out to this. They are included, um, and I actually had a conversation with one of the school committee members, um, and I asked her personally to join us, um, but we're going to get them hopefully one day. Um, Nicole, but thank you so much for that, Christine. I absolutely agree with that. And Nicole?
To Christine's point, I'm already working on that. So, um, my intent is to be at the very first School Committee Public Speak-Out Meeting, September 15th, to address mental health in Springfield Public Schools. So, somebody's already on that, Christine.
Well, and, and I'm really glad you're doing that, Nicole, and I got, I, I'm going to do this survey. But Christine, we need to keep saying it, right? Because we've invited them. I've talked to them personally, and, you know, it's, it's still, um, Springfield has a really good history, I'm going to say, or, or, I don't want to say bad, just a really, a big history of working in silos, even in these departments, right? In the school department, police department, um, everyone works in silos. And we, we have to figure out a way to change that because the only way that we can do this is by doing it together. You know, um, the First Lady of New York, the governor's wife, I don't think he's the governor anymore, but she actually. but she actually said that when she came to the United Way meeting, you know, and the only way we can do this is by doing it together. So I'm really excited that Christine brought that up, that Nicole is working on it, and that we're all gonna continue to work on it together. So thank you so much for that. Um I think Cindy was next. Go ahead, Cindy.
Okay, um and you and most of you know, or some of you know, that I primarily work with seniors. And I think maybe we should get um and not just seniors, caregivers, I have several that are my age. Um we should probably invite Greater Springfield Senior Services, because caregiver stress is insane. I just, Zeta actually met with a mutual friend, close friend of ours, a few minutes ago, and um she's just like losing it. And they need help desperately.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that. Thank you so much. Do you have a contact over there, Cindy, that you can maybe share with us?
I sure do. And um I don't know if anybody's going to the event next week. I don't even know if I mentioned it. At um Bay State Mason Square Health Center. Does anybody know about that? Mabel Sharif's crew is um putting that on and it's like National Health Center Week or something. Um I can send out the flyer to you guys, but I think we should be there as well.
Okay, that sounds great. Um Dela, X, and then Counselor.
I just wanna um support what Attorney Christine was saying about the importance of the school department um sitting in on these meetings and being at the table. You talk about intersectionality, right? And people, I I don't know what it is with the school system. It's the same with all of us in terms of um there's no such thing as just staying in one lane anymore when it comes to the work that has to be done out here. In the school system, you're dealing with kids that um are D S, D Y S involved. DCF involved, uh their parents are incarcerated. Uh these kids are dealing with, if they're not using substances, their parents are using substances. The 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 opportunity that the school department has is the fact that this is one place, and if you talk about starting with the kids, right? So we look at where the education starts, right? And uh where those support services lie to make an impact in terms of interrupting this generational trauma uh that uh is persistent uh because of people working in those silent silos and not willing to come out of their lanes. Um so I, one of my hopes has always been that we could get certified and licensed substance use counselors amongst the counseling staff within the um school department. I have correctional people that come for certification and licensure. I have DCF professionals that come for certification and like, they're supposed to be there. Correctional people comforts, people from the court. These are the people that are seeing the substance abusers. They need to know the information in terms of to know what to do and where to make the referrals, right? But the school department's not showing up, you know, and they're dealing with the most valuable aspect of community and population, young people. Um so, yeah, so I would very much like uh they should be at the table. And um and I know it's about self-care, mental health checkups and stuff. It's always the professionals who extend the service to people who forget that they need the service. You know, so uh I just wanna uh put that out there, Zeta. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you. Um Counselor Allen?
Uh yeah, thanks, Zeta. Uh I just want to say my my info might be old, but um Yolanda Johnson was, last I knew, was in charge of, you know, psychological service. I don't know if I got the title right, but counseling and that sort of thing. For a long time, she has been in that role. I don't know if that's current, but um she's a good person.
It is. She's still in charge, yep.
Yeah, okay. So maybe a personal outreach to her. Um you know, before you go to the, going to the public speak-out, I think is a great idea. But what's gonna happen after that is what happens in our public speak-out, is that there might be some action, there might not. And I think if you got to Yolanda maybe ahead of time and said you were thinking of doing that, maybe it would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you so much for that, uh Tim. All right, Teresa?
I was thinking of immigrant organizations that work with immigrant and refugee populations. Or social workers would be awesome.
Excellent, yep. Okay, and again, if you bring it up, I'm gonna ask you if you have any contacts um on those, because, you know, I don't know everybody. Everybody thinks I do, but I don't know everybody. But if you guys have any contacts, any um, you know, resources that we could reach out to, that'd be great. Thank you so much for that, um Counselor Allen. Yolanda Johnson, yeah, reaching out to her would be good. And and um I don't know if I know anyone that's working with immigrant population, but if anyone knows, that would be great. That's a good point. Um Ayana?
Sounds also gonna mention what um Counselor Allen said about uh Yolanda Johnson. I think that's a good, good point to sort of try to get her on board initially. I think that's important. I was gonna say the same thing. And then the other thing is um I think we have a lot of youth-serving organizations too, and I know some of them are a part of it, but I think we need to do a little bit more outreach to them. Because even though we are gonna do an outreach to Springfield School Department, the Springfield School Department also has those same students in their in their schools. And so reaching out to like uh some of the youth-serving organizations that have a lot of students that, you know, might be with the McKinney Vento Program, um they might be in some of the shelter programs. Um and so making sure that we're connecting with those youth too, because that's where we're seeing some of this um concern around mental health as well. So we have our adults, we have our elderly, and we have our youth. And we know now across the country, we're seeing a lot of, you know, young people, nothing against young people, but we are seeing some outgrowths of some habits and some behaviors that are concerning, you know, uh to all of us. So um looking at our youth uh-based serving organizations to get them on board, to see how we could collaborate and sort of help uh with the mental health check-up days, because at the end of the day, we're, like you said, Zeta, we're checking in with how someone's feeling, that we can prevent maybe some of these things that are happening on the onset rather than afterwards. And so I think, you know, getting them involved now and clarifying how their role would be, I think, is important.
I think that's a great idea. Um and I know that Alyssa, uh the Youth Mental Health Coalition is working with a lot of the youth-serving organizations. Um did you want to share something, Alyssa, about that?
Uh yeah, looks like um Nicole actually just did as well. Um so yes, so we have another year of funding where we're funding Beat the Odds is now joined with South End. And um we formalize the uh program framework a little bit more. And um to this point, I think we have at least some youth who are really interested in even more leadership opportunities. And so it's sounding like there would be some real synergies there in terms of what we're talking about here. Because they really do want to have a voice at the table and, you know, and be really powerful advocates for their own mental health and wellness. So, yeah.
Great, that's great. And I want to make sure that we continue to, you know, call on the youth to let them know, tell us what they need, because that's what, that's all. And I'm really excited about the Youth Mental Health Coalition, you know, being a part of this, because you're the voice, you know, you're the um, we're considered old people now. I'm in denial, but that's how they see us. Go ahead, Della.
So just one more thing, Zeta. I didn't think I would be talking so much, but um um I I think the power of being able to identify with people who look like you is really important. So the part I'd be willing to do is to advocate more to these uh uh groups of color um like Mocha, I I know you've reached out to them, but then there's the Crew. Uh there's Black Men of Greater Springfield. Uh I think they need to be on board and showing up in these places. I mean, um as a community, there is a commitment to give back. And um if we want to really save our young people, and I'm so glad there's a lot of conversation about our youth, because they are in crisis. And um um uh it's gonna be real important, especially our black men. Uh I think it's real important that um we advocate just a little bit harder in terms of making sure that they're at these events advocating for uh these mental health check-ups and just uh self-care.
Absolutely. And and Della, thank you so much for bringing that up, because, you know, um of course, we've invited I I want to say almost every agency in the city, including and specifically, I've reached out specifically to the um community, the agencies that are serving um specifically, you know, black and brown people, like the African Diaspora, Mental Health Association um and others, um but they haven't um necessarily been involved. I'm not sure if they're too busy or if they think, right, that this is not something that is for them, right? Because maybe they don't feel that they're going to fit in, but I think it's something that's absolutely necessary. Because again, we need to work together, right? We need to be able to um serve everyone and serve everyone in a culturally appropriate and culturally responsive way, which is what we're trying to do.
And I think what the point you hit on before in terms of getting people to understand what it means to work collaboratively, I don't know if people understand that clearly. Um and uh why it's important to do it that way and uh not to work, because working in silos, and then it's like with anything, Zeta, um you want anything done, you go to a busy person. So if you only got one or two people, I know, you you only, you got the same people doing the same thing and the same work. Is that why you're having a hard time getting them to, you know? We, and that's why I'm saying they need self-care. They need that mental health check-up, because, you know, that, you know, it's the same people working like really hard and, you know.
And the thing is that I feel like, you know, if we work collaboratively, then we wouldn't need to work so hard. You know what I mean?
Less work. It would, it would.
You know, um whatever you need, maybe I have what I need, maybe you have. And if we did that, I think it wouldn't be so hard. But because of the silos that has historically been the the way of of operating in the city, and I've probably across the country as well, um it does, it is make, it makes for hard work, you know, but I don't think it has, it has to be that hard. I think um the Youth Mental Health Coalition is learning that. I learned that when I was on the Mason Square Health Task Force, right? When you bring more people together, we work together, the work is divided and it's less work. Go ahead, Alyssa.
I just wanted to say real, real quick, Alyssa, I'm sorry, but it's true what you're saying, Zeta. No, it's true what you're saying, though. If we could be a village raising the child, the work would be a less easier and a less stressful and a less burnout. Thank you, Alyssa.
Go ahead, Alyssa.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to comment on um with uh Beat the Odds. We definitely also have found it challenging to get um youth who identify as male involved in that um work as well. And so I do think it's perhaps, maybe I'm not the right person at all to be saying this, but somebody to brainstorm around how that outreach could work better and we could create um a broader, more representational uh coalition.
Mm-hmm, okay, that's good. And I think, as everybody knows, right? They have the answer, right? So we have to find where they are and maybe ask them, how, what's the best way to reach out to you? You know, to your friends and and to everyone, so that we can do it, you know, the right way. Um where they'll respond, you know, and I think that's something that we can brainstorm about. And certainly, like, you know, Nicole said, you know, meet them where they're at. And maybe we might have to have some type of a day party or something like that, you know, and that's where we're gonna see them and that's where they're gonna come, and then that's where we're gonna be able to give them the information.
Yeah, it just reminds me of one more thing. In a small survey we did, uh it was, you know, convenience sample, but we um really focused on our black and brown communities. We did have more youth who identify as male participate, and they did identify a fair number of at least feelings around depression or grief or anxiety. So it's there, it's there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um Nicole?
I was just thinking, um when we're talking about getting out and and meeting them, you know, we we still have Stone Soul that will be coming up in September, and almost everybody in Springfield goes out to Stone Soul. And I feel like if some of us were walking around, which I'd be happy to volunteer and do that, you know, if some of us could walk around and and talk with people, you know, ask these same questions, like what are your barriers to to asking for help? Or what is it that you need? Like, though, I I think about those questions you had me asking at the launch day. You gave me different surveys for providers and for people seeking services. And I'm thinking about those and asking, you know, walking around and getting to our population directly where they're at.
Right, that's a great idea, Nicole. That's a great idea. And Stone Soul is in September, so I'm thinking on our committee that we just formed is gonna have to work on that and see who we can get to help us out with that. Um Teresa, did you have something else?
Um, no, no, I'm off that, but.
Okay, thank you so much. Um so we we've identified some people who are missing. And I'm sure there's a whole bunch. There's IC, the police department is missing. Um the uh the state senate is missing. We have a state rep here. Um but again, the 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 school department, absolutely. The sheriff's department. You know, they have a huge space out there in Ludlow um that is almost empty. Um good, maybe sheriff work, I don't know. Um but, you know, they have s- space, you know, and and Della talked about maybe, you know, some residential placements that, you know, people with substance abuse issues oftentimes need, you know, a stable residential setting to help them build a foundation to their recovery. And the way they do that is in a residential place. So um that's something that maybe the sheriff's department could offer, you know? But again, there's a lot of people missing. I I thought, um I think someone said it, I'm not sure who it was, but the court, right? The um the judicial system, I think we should, it should be here. And of course, insurance companies. The insurance companies absolutely should be here, because I, you know, um and I know this meeting is being recorded, you know, but they're part of the issue, right? Um the the compensation that they give to, for these services are not good, right? Um and that's the reason we can't have master's level clinicians doing the work for too long, because they can't afford it. They can't afford to work for agencies who are paying them what they have to pay them based on reimbursements rates from insurance companies. So those are some of the people that we're going to be hopefully reaching out to and possibly having to have specific meetings just for them, maybe just for the insurance company, just for the school department. Um because maybe they don't feel comfortable in a setting like this, because um, you know, historically, maybe they haven't had good outcomes after something like this. So um that's what I'm hoping that we're going to be able to do. And um eventually, you know, have Springfield working together to combat these issues, so that we can, you know, have some really, really good outcomes in the end. So um thank you all for that. This is very helpful. Della, would you be willing to reach out to some of the um like Mocha and the Crew and the Black Men of Greater?
I will do that.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Can I just say something briefly? And doesn't the sheriff's department have the after-incarceration support services?
Yep.
So that might be something.
And the other thing, though, you know, we wanna, we we want to get away from institutions doing the work that could belong to community. That's another piece I wanna uh kind of think about a little bit, because these established institutions get these monies, because they're established institutions. And the communities don't get the money.
Yep.
Um because they don't have the staff to write the grants and the funding where the institutions do. But sincerely, what belongs in the responsibility of the institution? And what was, what belongs in the responsibility of community? And I just think we just have to like guilt people if we have to. Step it up, you know?
Worked out, Doug.
Yeah, yeah, guilt will work, you know? So, yeah.
I think that's something that, you know, at the, we're in our fourth meeting with the Mental Health Committee, um Subcommittee on the City. We have two more official meetings left, um, so that we could submit a report, right? At the end of this, that's the reason we're meeting. Um, and we're going to, you know, list our assets here in Springfield, list our barriers and list recommendations, you know? So these are the type of things that we want to hear, right? Maybe um have an agency that, you know, is serving a, a population, um, you know, maybe figure out a way to have that, you know, have the community run some of their programs, because that's what needs to happen, right? Because the community knows where the community is. And like Nicole said, you know, meeting people where they're at. Um, they're, um, that's the best place to meet them, you know? Looking at the chat, hold on a second. And you know, there's no such thing as multitasking. You can't do it.
Yes, you can.
No, your brain can only have one thought at once.
I'm talking, I'm billing, I'm chatting. I'm kidding.
Okay, Dela, that'd be awesome if you, would you be willing to um talk to Yolanda?
I, yeah, I should, yes.
If you could, that would be great. Again.
But I will confer with you first.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll talk. Um, the Wild Flyer, Wildflower Alliance, I hadn't heard of that. I've heard of the Lighthouse. I know the Lighthouse. Um, but the Wild Fire Flower Alliance, um, who would want to reach out to Sarah Davis?
I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you, Teresa. Perfect. Okay, so we have the um Greater Springfield. Court people, I wonder if Christine, oh, Christine's not here. Or, I know, she's not here. Um, I'm gonna ask Christine if she could reach out to court people. We'll, we'll assign Christine everything since she's not here now.
Terrible. Who's following the, um, Wildflower Alliance?
Teresa.
Teresa, thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you. All right, anything else that, um, anyone else? The youth-serving organizations, I think Alyssa, you have that. Um, and maybe possibly if, you know, we can figure out a way, because I really love what the Youth Mental Health Coalition is doing and what PHI is doing uh with the youth specifically. So I'm excited to um, to, you know, partner with you guys to figure out a way um to do that. Um, Nicole, you're gonna reach out to Senator Gomez? That's perfect. Excellent, excellent. All right, um, perfect, excellent. This is great. I'm so excited. Thank you all, um, for, again, for coming out tonight. You know, I'm a stickler for time, so it's six fifty-six. Um, Sarah, we hadn't heard from you a lot tonight. Anything you wanted, two minutes you want to say?
It is very extended for all of the things, and my mind is going a mile a minute of thinking of who, who else can we reach out to? So I'm gonna keep thinking of that, and I'll, I'll bring some additional ideas to our, our subcommittee meeting as a branch of.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so be on the lookout for an email, scheduling the sub, subcommittee meeting, um, probably um early next week, because we have to get going on this, um, because August seventeenth will be here before you know it. Um, and again, you'll get the minutes of this meeting, which we'll put together. And um, and I'm just really excited. Thank you all so much. You all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ida.
Bless you, Zeta.
You.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone. Thank you.